I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, January 22, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation by Captain Stephanie Lueares from the Salvation Army, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance with members of the Pace Club.
Good evening, let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this evening that we're gathered together, and we just raise up the leaders of our community, our mayor and our city council, and all those governing bodies that we have in our community that make the decisions that affect this great city that we call home. Lord, just be with the decisions made here tonight, that they would be in the best interest of the city and those that live here, that we can continue to enjoy the great beauty and home, this place that we call home, Lake Havasu City. Just continue to be with all of us, bless this great city and all that is done here. We pray this in your holy name tonight, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Any members of the Pace, if you'd like to join us?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now I ask you to continue to stand and join me in the preamble of the Constitution. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. Thank you.
If you'd like to share some words about your club?
Yes, please. Okay, hello, I'm Jovi Bell, and we are some of your Smoke Tree Elementary School Patriotic Club. We now have forty-six students in our club. We have created a care package and cards for a group of Navy SEALs overseas. When Sonny Borelli came to see us, he showed us how a bill is made and the process, what it goes through, and it was really fun because he used candy to show us.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Jameson, and in our Smoke Tree Patriotic Club, we have learned a lot of patriotic songs, including "God Bless America," and in addition, we have written letters to our local veterans.
Hi, I'm Catherine Thompson, and as well as all those lovely facts, our organization, we have also made posters, brochure, and my personal favorite, a PowerPoint about our favorite founding father. We've learned the preamble in sign language as well as in words, and as a group, we practice the preamble every meeting we attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today, we appreciate you being here. The next item on our agenda is a roll call. The city clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Kel Sheehy?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Gordon Grove?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Donna McCoy?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
Here.
Thank you. Next is the Call to the Public. The Call to the Public is open for citizens wishing to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city. Your comments would be limited to five minutes or less. If you wish to address an item already on tonight's agenda, you should wait until that item's announced for the public hearing. At the conclusion of the open Call to the Public, individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, may ask after review a matter, or may ask that the matter be put on a future agenda. We cannot have a two-way conversation during the Call to the Public, that's why we ask if you have, if it's already on the agenda, wait until that time when we can have a two-way conversation back and forth. There is a light indicator, green means go, yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the five minutes is up, and that will be up here on the podium. You don't have to sign up for the Call to the Public, but we did have two, so we'll start with that. We first have Colleen Madison from the food bank.
Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I am running the new food bank for the Havasu Community Health Foundation that is at 1980 North Kiowa Boulevard. Am I supposed to do something?
No, you're fine. Just talk into the microphone so folks at home can hear you as well.
Okay. And I just wanted to come here, and I wanted to thank the city council for working with the Havasu Community Health Foundation and making this food bank happen. So we have, in front of you, I think you have one of these, the CEO of the Havasu Community Health Foundation made this on Friday. So you can see, as of Friday, we have four hundred and seventy-seven families signed up. We opened September seventeenth. We're open four days a week for three hours. As of today, which is only a couple of days after that, business hours after that, we now have four hundred and ninety-one families signed up. So this was something that was very much needed. There is a lot of families that could not get services because other food banks could not handle, as all of the people, it was just too many for the food banks that were left in town without the interagency. So I am so grateful for the opportunity that the city gave us to open this food bank and serve these people, and I just wanted to thank everyone. We do have a clothing closet in there as well, and today, you know, we had a gentleman come in with a little boy today that had no shoes, and it is cold out, and somebody, he lived in Craigie Wash, and somebody stole his shoes. And we were able to give him, we didn't have, he had a size thirteen foot, we didn't have shoes for him, but we were able to give him socks, and blankets, and a tarp, and food, and clothes. And we had another, a couple, a married couple come in, that because of the wind, could not boil water to cook their food, and the wind blew their tent away. And again, we were able to give them blankets, and towels, and washcloths, and a tarp, and food that they could just eat out of the can. You know, it was soup and like raviolis, which isn't going to be warm, but at least it was something for nourishment. And if it wasn't for the city council and the health foundation, we would not be serving these people. So I'm very happy, I'm very grateful, and I just wanted to thank everybody, and let you know where we're at, and I'm hoping to come back and just keep you posted of where we are, and let you know what a great job you're doing by letting us do what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything that you're doing, and for the leadership of the Havasu Community Health Foundation to make that happen, so thank you. Thank you very much for everything that you're doing.
Oh, thank you.
Next, we have Lisa Kruger from the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and councilmembers. We are starting something new this year. We are going to be inviting our new chamber members to come and be introduced to you at city council meetings, and this evening, I'm very pleased to introduce two of our newest members to you. We have, from A to Z Recycling, we have Alan and Barbara Finley. Alan and Barbara are back here in the back. They are located, I believe you have their business card, but they're located over on Corona, and they are doing all sorts of recycling over there. And then we also have Restoration One of Mojave County, we have Mike Hopkins and Dylan Dupont are here, and I believe that you all received one of their brochures to tell you about their services. And anyone has any questions anytime on any of our new members, please let me know. The reason that we're doing this is I thought it would be a nice idea for you all to meet some of the people who are generating the revenue that keeps our city functioning, so thank you for the time. And I also just want to give a shout out to the streets, and Parks and Rec, and fire, and police for all the pre-event help that is going to, that we've already done, and for all the help we're going to need during Winterfest Weekend that's coming up very soon. We've sold four hundred and sixty-two ten-by-ten booths this year, so it's going to be a great event. Thank you all.
Thank you. Now, this is an open Call to the Public. Would anyone else like to address the city council on any matter? Seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Next agenda is the Consent Agenda. Do any members of the city council want to remove any of the items on the Consent Agenda for discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Number seven on our agenda is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. We'll start with the City Manager's Report.
Mayor, council, good evening. The City Manager's Report for January twenty-second, 2019. Start off with information about last Monday, when Mayor Sheehy attended the opening day at the Arizona Legislature. There, he witnessed the swearing-in of Governor Doug Ducey, Senator Sonny Borelli, and House Representatives Regina Cobb and Leo Biasucci. Mayor Sheehy and Lake Havasu City continues to forge and maintain relationships with elected officials at the state level to best represent the city and our citizens. Councilmember Jenny Koch and Jerry Bracamonte, city staff, took the Havasu Youth Advisory Council to Phoenix on Saturday to meet with the Center for Future of Arizona and the other youth councils that they're competing against in the democracy competition. Those other communities include Tempe, Avondale, and San Luis. Each youth council gave a presentation on an issue they're facing in their city, and the solutions that they would take to solve these issues. Over the next four months, HIAAC, or our Havasu Youth Advisory Council, will implement one of these solutions as a pilot project here in Lake Havasu City. They've selected their mission, and it's to advocate and bring awareness to mental health issues in Lake Havasu City through education and support, and they plan to host a community workshop for their efforts here in the near future. While in Phoenix, Ella Wofford, one of our HIAAC members, was selected to participate in the Center for Future of Arizona's Dream Big Arizona Marketing Video. Ella has provided a platform to share her thoughts on what is important to the success of our youth and our state. The video will launch February twenty-eighth to a large audience of policymakers, educators, workforce, and economic development leaders, and many more. She has had amazing opportunities because of HIAAC and participating in democracy, and we can't wait to see what she does next. Because of her recent successes, I invited Ella Wofford to join me on Speak Out today on the radio, and we talked about HIAAC's trip to Phoenix and the opportunities that they've had, that the Havasu Youth Advisory Council and others have had because of the success of advocating for Lake Havasu City's needs and wants. And she told me today that she's going to be in attendance at Thursday's retreat, our council planning session, so she wants, she's eager to learn more about the city's long-range plans. Speaking of which, staff is looking forward to meeting with the council this Thursday at the city council planning session. Councilmembers can expect a full lay of discussions on long-range planning, financial outlook, and budget timeline. We'll have a legal update, discussions on future projects, and identify opportunities for the city to move forward. As you're all well aware, Evelyn Kasuga will join us as the facilitator for the day. She is a former city manager and former APS executive, and she currently serves as Director of Community and Economic Prosperity, and Senior Advisor for the Center for Future of Arizona, and she manages community relations for the Office of the President at Central Arizona College. So we're looking forward to the session on Thursday, and the public is invited to join us. It'll be at the Islander at 8:30 AM, the meeting starts, and we'll go into the afternoon. And lastly, a reminder that the next coffee with the mayor and city manager is on Friday, February first. It'll take place at 8:30 AM, and the meeting will take place at the Lake Havasu City Municipal Airport. Mayor, council, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for the city manager? All right. Seven point two is announced vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and city council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is the listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, one alternate non-pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members, three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Citizens who are interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, they're also available on the city's website.
Thank you. All right, number eight, our public hearings. We'll start with eight point one. Adopt Ordinance Number nineteen dash one-two-one-one, rezoning APN 115 dash zero-seven dash zero-seven-eight-A, eight fifty London Bridge Road from AP Agriculture Preservation District to LI Light Industrial District. Mr. Smalley?
Thank you, mayor and council. The property is on the western edge of the community, located along London Bridge Road. It's about a half an acre. You can see it here outlined in yellow, it's at the corner of Dover and Lake Havasu Avenue. It's actually been incorporated into this seven-and-a-half acre parcel you see behind it, which is a traditional storage unit project. Here's the zoning. The majority of that parcel, seven-and-a-half acres, is already zoned light industrial. We're asking that, or, sorry, the applicant is asking that the balance, the half acre in front, be rezoned to light industrial as well, and the planning commission voted seven-zero unanimously to approve this. And that concludes my portion of the presentation.
Thank you. Do any members of the city council have any questions? For Stewart? This is a public hearing. Do any members of the public wish to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes. I move to adopt ordinance number one-nine dash one-two-one-one, amending the zoning classification and district boundary of APN 115 dash zero-seven dash zero-seven-eight-A, eight fifty London Bridge Road from AP to LI.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote. Thank you. Eight point two is approve a renewable energy credit purchase agreement and short-form interconnection agreement with Unisource Energy Services for the donation of a solar shade structure for use at Mesquite Park. Mr. Keane?
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you, as an item, seeking approval for a renewable energy credit agreement and short-form interconnection agreement with Unisource Energy Service. Unisource approached us with the project a couple months ago to show their ongoing commitment to renewable energy and to give back to the community of Lake Havasu City. This project consists of Unisource donating to the city a shade structure that is approximately twenty-one feet by sixteen feet, with eighteen three-hundred-and-thirty-five watt AC sun power units attached to the roof to produce electricity. In a similar project, Unisource worked with the city of Kingman a couple years ago and donated a similar shade structure near their shade, near their spray park, and that's shade structure shown here with the solar panels on the roof. In conversation with several city departments and with Unisource, we selected Mesquite Park as an ideal location for this project. Mesquite Park is located between Mesquite Avenue and McCulloch Boulevard, just west of Akoma, kind of shown here in the red circle. The site was selected as there's currently no shade at the park, and the amount of electricity that the power, of electrical power produced by these units will equal approximately eighty-five percent of the power used at the park currently to power the splash pad, so it's a very similar The structure would be installed in this area of the current concrete, between the park and the parking lot. We'll also, once the project is finished, move some picnic tables underneath for a place for family gatherings for shade. With that, that includes my proportion of this presentation. I do know there are some representatives from Unisource here as well, if council would have any direct questions to them.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions? Did Unisource want to make a presentation, or? No, all right.
I have a question.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, councilmember, or Vice Mayor Lane?
Yes, just, the only question I have is maintenance on this type of a structure. I don't use solar, I don't have solar, I don't know what kind of maintenance it would take. Are there any maintenance costs associated with this that the city would have to incur?
Anthony, you want to come up?
The design of the system means the maintenance would be minimal. All the equipment is warranted for twenty-five years, so if anything was to stop working, we could work with the installer manufacturers, get it replaced, so maintenance would be very low. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I? You'd be the guy to know, we had to convert the direct current to an alternating current using an inverter, I assume?
Yes.
And do you guys kind of know, is that part of the package, and where would it be?
It is. This package is what you call an AC module, so there's micro-amp built into the panel, so it's all basically one unit manufactured together and warranted together. Yeah.
Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, could you tell me some of the other locations that were considered when you, before you chose this location?
I know one that we definitely talked about was out at Sarah Park, near the trailhead to power the bathroom lift station there. And then this was our, when we saw this one, there was definitely the need, so we kind of decided that would be a nice fit.
Do any other members of the council have any questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing, we will open it up. Does anyone from the public want to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the renewable energy credit purchase agreement for balance of system program and short-form interconnection agreement with Unisource Energy Services for the donation of a solar shade structure for use at Mesquite Park, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents on behalf of the city to accept and operate the solar shade structure. Second?
We do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Next is item eight point three, award bid for the North Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Influent Screen Replacement to JWC Environmental.
Good evening, council, mayor. Mike Slidabo, wastewater. I've been there about twenty-four years in charge of all the treatment. What we have before you is the replacement of our influent screens, and they are the fine screens. It's the first stage of the treatment process. As you can see on the slides in front of you, that they've taken a beating, a beating over the years, primarily due to H2S. Also, the screen panels in there are not really designed for the amount of flows that we're, that we're providing to them. What's, I think the most important aspect of this type of screen is, this treatment plant does fifty-three percent of, you know, all the city's influent that we produce, so it's, you know, an important part, so. They're two-millimeter screens, the plant's an MBR, which is a membrane bioreactor, which is ultrafiltration. You can see in this slide, that's where influent goes into our equalization basin there, so it is a budgeted line item that we budgeted for, so if there's any questions.
Do any members of the city council have any questions for? For staff? Councilmember Lane?
I'm just curious, that's a, there's a big difference in the high bid to the low bid, and then that original bid is, did they cover, I'm assuming they did, they covered everything, but there a reason why the bid is so different?
Well, the original contractor that installed it was Ovivo, and these are Jones Atwood. They're built in England, their parent company is in Quebec, so right now, when we have to get parts for these, you know, it takes twenty-four to twenty-six weeks for them. They basically have to manufacture them. So the travel is, you know, the shipping on everything is the higher cost. I would like to point out also that there's only three of these models left worldwide, and we have, you know, one set of them.
But to your point, that was one of the reasons, Mike, actually, he basically handled this entire process. He developed the specifications on, based on what was there at the plant, went out to bid, didn't have very many bidders, only had one, so rethought the process, made sure he contacted manufacturers, resubmitted the bid. That's why we were nice, happy to get the three bids, and then what you're finding out is this is kind of a specialized thing, so if those other two contractors weren't interested in coming to Lake Havasu City, or were busy with something else, they would have gave bids that required them to get paid for that inconvenience, and we were just lucky enough to find a bidder that was interested in giving us a very good quality bid for that work. And again, Mike's been in contact with all of those to develop those specs, so we got a positive outcome.
And we also, you know, I made contact with their references as well, with, you know, a contact that I know up in Henderson, which is an MBR plant as well, similar to ours, a little bit larger, and they have the screens from JWC, and in six years, they've only had three issues, and JWC was right there on the spot just to make the repairs. And the city's had a relationship with JWC for the last twenty-plus years with a couple of other products that we have of theirs, which is, it's a high-quality product.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? All right, this is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public want to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, councilmember Dolan?
I move to award the bid for the North Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Influent Screen Replacement to JWC Environmental in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
Second?
We do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Slidabo, and Mr. Clark. All right, the next item on our agenda is number nine, Current Events. Do any councilmembers have any committee reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number ten, which is our final Call to the Public for the evening. Would any member of the public want to address the city council at this time?
Mayor Sheehy, councilmembers, I want to talk to you about pickleball and your upcoming retreat in two days. To get pickleball more into the budget, the association has raised over fifty thousand dollars to give to the city to help build these courts. It's about a third of what the courts would cost. And right now, there's over fifty people a day playing up at Dick's Amp, so it's well overplayed, we need more courts up there. It's not, will you build them, they will come, they're already here, so they just need some more. So really think about pickleball courts on your retreat this week for the new coming budget in the next coming year. And also, the pickleball courts would be about five percent of what is projected for Sarah Park, so it's something that we really need in this town, and hopefully you guys would consider it in the next week or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Item eleven is Future Meetings. On Thursday, this Thursday, January twenty-fourth, 2019, at 8:30 AM, we'll have our city council planning retreat. As Mr. Knutson mentioned earlier, that is at the Islander RV Resort, that is on the island. The public is welcome and encouraged to attend, come and go as you please. It will be an all-day meeting, but if only an hour in your schedule is available, come join us for that hour. The next regular The next regular meeting is on Tuesday, February twelfth, two thousand nineteen, at six PM, and then on Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, at six PM, we will have a regular meeting. Do any of our councilmembers have any future agenda items? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. Have a great evening. Thank you for being here today.